We're going to start the, uh, the inter-guest review session with the commercial bill. And this is for the super district race eight, position three. And we're going to start with his question. The question is, why are you running for this office and what would you do if you were elected? And I'll start with Reverend Gerald Connor.
Is there a time limit across the room?
Uh, two minutes.
Okay, um, number one, to see the apathy that's developing in Memphis. Uh, to see the vote of concern about the direction of our city. Number three, we just celebrated our East High School thirtieth year class reunion. And they came to my church to celebrate the worship service. And during that segment, the time that I spent with those students, many of them who now live out of town, they were disheartened by the reputation Memphis has gained. They were disheartened by the lack of growth in our city. They were disheartened by the fact that many people choose to leave Memphis instead of relocate to Memphis. They were disheartened that Memphis seemed to be safer when we were back in high school than we are now. So to see the sadness, the apathy that's going around within our community, and to know my history of being a hard worker within Memphis, to being a person who has created many programs to try to enhance and uplift the masses in Memphis, and to see none of that being done, to see the lack of leadership on the city council, then I felt it my moral obligation to put a statesman in the race instead of a politician. I noticed that we have a lot of politicians, but I dare not to be a politician, but a, a statesman who represents the good of the state, the people, instead of his own best interests. Um, so that's number one, why I decided to put myself into this race.
Lynette, same question.
I am Dr. Lynette Williams, I'm running for super district eight, position number three. And I have an acronym, basically, the way I feel as far as my platform is concerned. And I believe Memphis needs help, H-E-L-P. First off, uh, we have a crisis, a healthcare crisis in this city. It starts with basically a lot of people being uninsured and underinsured, including our police and firemen. Uh, we have health crisis related to water contamination with lead and other issues. We have an infant mortality rate of thirteen percent, uh, which is worse than a third world country. Uh, the national average is five point eight percent. And that shouldn't be because we have a medical school here in town, as well as a school of public health. Um, in addition to that, uh, a lot of our people are just not healthy here in Memphis, for whatever obvious reasons. Um, also, the E, I believe we need to have more economic development in our community. We need to have, uh, better education. Our education system is failing our students. Um, as well as we need more entrepreneurship, we need more businesses in our communities where we live. And, um, hell, I believe everybody in Memphis should be making a living wage if you live in this city. Uh, at least fifteen dollars an hour. I believe in unions, um, and it's part of that, I believe people should be homeowners. And on fifteen dollars an hour, you could actually own a home in this city. And so I, I'm definitely involved in that area. And I want to be P, a public servant that will actually serve, as well as be, um, a servant to the people as far as all their needs are concerned, as far as moving Memphis forward at this time. And so, um, I just want to let everybody know that I'm last on the ballot, but I'll keep them first.
Okay, so let's start, start this off, and we may have others join us as we go along. We, we won't go back to the beginning, we'll continue where we are when they come in, so you know. So let's start the first question that involves economic development. And I wanted to know, what would be your approach to economic development? The city has, and the council has long used a series of things, including, uh, TIPS, uh, tax increment financing, along with, uh, the, uh, much discussed pilots, uh, payment of low taxes, as well as other means of enticing, getting companies to come here, giving them enticements to invest in the city. What would be your approach to that? I'm gonna start with you, Reverend Connor.
Okay, well, I think the pilot program is, is working. Uh, we have brought in over a billion dollars in, in funds because of that program, but we need to enhance it and expand it even more to attract the corporate five hundred, the Fortune five hundred companies to our city, which, right now, one-third of the Fortune five hundred companies are located in six cities. Memphis, of course, we have a few, only Federal Express mainly. Um, and autos on, if I'm not mistaken, but we need to be able to honor the legacy of Fred Smith by bringing, attracting world-class companies to our city. And that will not just be done by the TIPS, that won't be done just by the pilots. It has to be done as well as making Memphis safer and making Memphis attractive, um, to these Fortune five hundred companies, because no one wants to relocate to Memphis. They can give, we can give away a billion dollars in tax relief, but they don't want to relocate to Memphis because they feel we are a dangerous city. They don't want to relocate to Memphis because they feel that we are not a highly educated city. So we need to, we cannot truly have an economic development boom without fighting the crime that's existing in our community, without also elevating the academics within our community. It's, it's a three-fold core that we have to implement. Not just the tax incentives, but also fighting crime to make our community safer, because many of these Fortune five hundred companies who would relocate, they're interested in bringing, they, they have to bring their families. And they don't want to bring their families into a war zone. They don't want to bring their families into a non-safe environment. So we can give a lot of the TIPS, and we can give a lot of the pilot, um, money, but again, if the people are not feeling safe, they don't want to come to Memphis. And that's just the reputation that we have. Some of the latest research have shown that Memphis now is tied with five other cities, such as Detroit and St. Louis, as the most crime-ridden city per, per capita in the country. So again, with these headlines being sent across the country, these decision-makers, these CEOs are looking at that. And they're saying no to Memphis every time. You just got five thousand jobs sent to Nashville from Amazon, but we don't get that in Memphis. So we need to have a, a mass influx of safety measures for our community. We need to do everything we can possible to upgrade the educational environment within our community. And, and then we can see some shifts in the paradigm of companies wanting to relocate to Memphis. But until then, we can't even keep our own citizens in Memphis. Why do we think that other companies, their population will want to move to our city? So we must address not only those tax increases or those tax breaks for those communities, but also we have to address safety. We have to address education, because those are the three major things that companies are looking for when they're going to relocate and bring thousands of jobs to our city, which is safety for their population, their staff, their workforce. Also, the education in that community that they're going to bring their workforce, they're going to relocate their workforce to our city. So again, we have to address it in three areas. The tax incentives, the crime, as well as the education.
Okay, uh, Dr. Williams, your chance to answer the same question. I can repeat the question at any time.
Repeat the question.
The question is really about economic development. This city has long used, uh, tax increment financing and a pilot program, payment of low taxes to lure companies to invest or to expand in Memphis. What would be your approach to trying to get more companies to expand? Is it enough to use those incentives we're already using, or would you want to use others?
Um, as far as the incentives and the pilot programs, I'm not too happy with what's been done in the past. Especially, one example would be, um, Electrolux. They've lost six hundred and fifty jobs. Um, and basically, the, the, the company takes the incentives and they're out of our area. Um, that has been the case a lot of the times. And additional taxes to do things, we haven't felt any impact, especially in the neighborhood that I'm in, uh, from, which is the southern part of the district, super district eight. Um, I'm from a historic neighborhood, Lady Gardens. And, um, we haven't seen any of the, the wealth or the incentives as far as the rest of the city has seen out of East and other places midtown. And we'd like to be part of that. And so as a result of that, I've tried to create a, a commu- community solution. I started a CDC, was it Acolina, Lady Gardens CDC? And I really plan to, uh, address all the economic development in that area specifically. Because traditionally, that's a neighborhood where you have a lot of teachers, um, doctors, uh, lawyers, um, educated black people in this city. Um, in the beginning, um, in the sixties, um, it was developed, that particular neighborhood. And during that time, uh, Bill Street was a boom. We had a lot of black millionaires in the city at that time. We actually had a country club in Lady Gardens as well. And so, um, that area has been somewhat abandoned. We do have a lot of, uh, not as much blight as some of the other areas in town. However, we want to actually build our education base. And we've lost a lot of our schools in that area, Manor Lake being one. And it's also a voting location that we've lost in that area. So the, um, CDC will address a lot of the economic, uh, development pieces. I have a homeless to homeownership program with that. And then in addition to that, um, we have a lot of sweat equity type of programs and stuff to help the elderly as far as, uh, improvements and repairs in that area. Um, and we also, I, I'm also the CEO of a new, um, reentry resource group, which is, uh, helping ex-offenders reincorporate. We have a, a lot of people that have been incarcerated that are out, that for one other reason or the other, they have not been able to, you know, really do what they need to do because they're unable to get, uh, good jobs because of their felonies and this kind of thing. So what I'm trying to do is to use that particular group as a resource that lives here in Memphis, that wants to stay here in Memphis, and that wants to change their lives to basically incorporate them into the workforce. And so by doing that, we want to restore their voting rights, because most people don't know that unless you committed rape, murder, voter fraud, or treason, you can vote in the state of Tennessee. So anything else, um, you know, you can pretty much vote. And that's between nineteen eighty-one and, and the present. Between nineteen seventy-three and nineteen eighty-one, no matter what you did, you're eligible to vote in the state of Tennessee. And so a lot of people in our community aren't aware that that might be their only voice that they need. They need to be able to, to at least get elected officials that are sensitive to their needs. And that's a large population here in Memphis. And that's a, a, a working resource that we can, if we can get them at a living wage. And I think that would help reduce the crime as, as far as that's concerned. It's, it's, it's actually giving people a job and giving them something that they can feel proud of as far as the community. So basically, I do forums, um, to, uh, helping our, our ex-offenders, you know, in the community. I do forums on that, and I'm trying to get them to the place where they can really incorporate and build Memphis. And since we need really infrastructure, um, in this community, and we need a, a workforce that lives here in the city that can do that, because we have such a problem with the water contamination, um, with lead in our water. In three eight one oh nine, three eight one two six, three eight one two seven, three one, three eight one oh six, we have kids with lead levels being screened greater than twenty-five. Lead is not compatible with life. We should have a zero tolerance for lead here in Memphis water. Um, right now, I think the last report I read, they had twelve parts per billion. The EPA says you can have up to fifteen. In Memphis, when we have a sick population, when you have infants dying, uh, a one-month-old is not eating paint chips off the wall, okay? So they're getting it from their water source. So what we have to do is we basically have to get with this population. And I just, I am finally, I just got the final numbers on this like last week. And I've been trying to get that since April. And so what I will do is I will try to, you know, get that information out to the public, because that's something that we really have to address. And because we are a tourist attraction as far as the state of Tennessee, we have over a million visitors that come, um, monthly to Memphis, Tennessee. And that revenue, um, and they have TIPS in certain areas in Whitehaven and some other places where they actually have increased taxes. Um, we don't see any of that being put in the neighborhoods surrounding the downtown area. We think we need to have our fair share, and we need to invest in the people that actually want to live here. We don't have to transplant anybody. If we made it conducive where we could live here, I think we could attract the, the, the best and the brightest that were actually born and raised here in Memphis.
And I know I want to, I want to move to the next question.
Yes, I was with like seven minutes, so I just wanted to.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm excited. I was timing like my god.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I get the cutoff sign in two minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry.
Since it's only two of you, maybe we get a little longer.
Yeah, I was taking up everybody else's time.
I think we have another, uh.
Yeah, uh, okay, I'm sorry.
Hello. Okay, wonderful. So sorry for being so late.
That's all, call, jump on in, we're taking it, so just put it right there on the end, next to the reverend.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, right next to the reverend.
You want me to move over?
No, you're fine, you're fine. So this is the next question, and, uh, I'll say it, say it up front so all of you can answer this question.
I'm sorry.
So the first, both Reverend Connor and Dr. Williams have talked about, uh, crime in Memphis.
I'm gonna change your name tag.
Uh, you want to move, move over, please, just move over one.
I'm sorry, this chair is stuck underneath something, okay, now it's good.
So this, uh, question concerns crime. You've both indicated that crime is a major issue in the city, and we agree. And so this question concerns what you would do if elected about dealing with the level of violent crime in Memphis. And I'll reference specifically that for the homicide rate, which this year, we're on par, I have about two hundred homicides for the whole year. And while that's a lower number than our record number in two thousand sixteen, it is still, we're seemingly high as a number of homicides in this region, in the city. What would you do about trying to drop that number down, as well as deal with violent crime in your district? So I'm gonna start with Reverend Connor, and then move to the right, and then back to, then back to my, my left. Okay, Reverend Connor?
Okay, I'm gonna put another timer, so I don't go.
We'll see, we'll keep track of it.
Okay.
Two minutes for each other.
Okay.
This is something that, crime is very important. Again, because there could be no true economic development without Memphis' image being changed dramatically, dramatically with this crime issue. Um, I think my church is the only African-American church in the city of Memphis. And we're a smaller church, that we purchased a sky cop that helps the entire Hickory Hill Road, and as well as, you know, the activities of our church, because I believe in investing in whatever is going to help our residents feel safer. So the sky cops can make a major impact in just the feeling of safety. One thing that struck me is, Martavis Johns, he contributed to an organization that is run by his friends called Lifeline to Success. He has given them four hundred thousand dollars in the last two hun- in the last two years in terms of grant money. That could have been seventy-two sky cops in our district. That could make a major impact. That could have been seventy-two sky cops. But he's given one organization that he's connected to four hundred thousand dollars in two years. So I know why he's probably not here today, because that's a good question that you would want to ask the community. That money could have gone to helping reduce crime in our district. But again, we have to have more city council residents who are also buying in to that powerful idea of fighting crime and bringing public safety at the top of the forefront. You cannot do that when you are aligned with just a few of your friends' organizations and making sure that they're taken care of, but not the entire city of Memphis. Whereas I understand again, the importance of investing in safety. So therefore, I do whatever I have to do to make sure that the public is as safe as possible. So fighting crime without investing in those activities that'll help fight crime is not going to make anything, is not going to make any impact. As a matter of fact, Jackson, Tennessee, has more police officers per capita than Memphis, Tennessee. So of course, we need to increase the number of police officers in our area as well. How can Jackson, a much smaller city, not known for the crime amount that we are known for in Memphis, have more police officers per capita than the city of Memphis? So I am for hiring more police officers, and not just hiring more police officers, because that's a nice political ring, here's a nice political ring to it. But let's make them visible. What good is hiring more police officers if we don't know where they are? So we need to have actions and ordinances in place that will enforce what we're spending our money to help reduce crime.
Dr. Williams, same question.
I believe we have a problem, and I think it's really primarily linked to poverty in this area. We have almost thirty percent, uh, poverty rate here in this area. And poorly educated people, uh, poverty-stricken people have a tendency to commit crimes to get whatever they need. And I think the, the basic thing that we really have to invest in would have to be, um, economic development in these communities, education, we have to have that. We all know the statistics. If you don't know how to read by the third grade, you're going to be, uh, a criminal for the most part. So we have to basically come together as a community to embrace people at an early age to try to help with that. Now, we do have a, a problem with our water as far as the lead. Now that causes developmental delays, it also, uh, causes violent behavior, um, and anger as far as that's related, and we need to make sure that's not an issue. So by fixing our infrastructure, we need to do that. Uh, the crime has actually, you know, I don't know what happened exactly, but apparently, uh, when Strickland was the chief of, uh, or the chairman of the city council, there was a mass exodus of police officers and firemen, because I think he, basically, they got rid of the healthcare as well as their pension at that time. Um, and now they're kind of scraping the bottom of the barrel, because everybody who gets trained at the academy is well-trained, and they leave and go to other places, and they don't want to stay in Memphis because of the, the benefits package and how it's related. A lot of them are saying they're not staying because they, they're not paid well enough. You can get paid in addition to a pension and healthcare at other, in other cities. And I think we need to start at that level and make sure our firemen and our policemen get adequate pension, because I just thought it was unconscionable to take care, take away healthcare for fire and police. I just don't understand that. They put their lives on the line every day. And there's no reason why they shouldn't get the best in, in addition to the rest of the citizens here in Memphis.
Okay, Alan, same question.
Yep, so let's talk about what the data shows. So the data shows us that sky cops do not decrease crime in the areas that they're placed. Um, and you can go ask Bankhampton if you're unsure about that, because they're experiencing a spike in crime. And why? The idea is that sky cop cameras in the air is fewer boots on the ground. As far as boots on the ground goes, the data also shows that increasing police officers does not increase safety. Because what happens when we increase police officers, um, on a police force that provides six times the amount of money for weapons trading as it does for de-escalation and crisis intervention tactics, and when we allow police officers to engage in public-facing dialogue that is racist and discriminatory against the very communities there inside, what we have is an increasing police force should we choose to grant more officers or grant a larger budget that allows them to hire more officers, that does exactly what it's been doing in communities in Memphis for decades, which is overpolicing and terrorizing black and brown communities. And it has to stop. So what do we do about it? So the first thing we can do is, I agree with the folks on this, um, dais that collective bargaining is important and it matters. And the pension that was taken from police and fire was wrong. So I'm in support of restoring pension. Because oftentimes what we're talking about is, we're talking about people who are already retired or who are preparing to retire from the force. So in my mind, that's a separate issue. And I think we should do it. Um, and then I think what we have to do is, we have to have a police force that understands that their primary directive is to serve and protect citizens. Right now, we know that Memphis police officers illegally surveyed community organizers and activists. I was one of them. My tax dollars paid for me to be followed home by an unmarked car. Couple of weeks ago, we were at, um, goodness, where was it? I believe it was Crosstown that we were at. We were at Crosstown, and the question arose, do you support an increase in the police budget? And my answer was no. And I gave many of the reasons that I just gave to you. Um, Martavis got up and said that the question was essentially irrelevant, because city council does not control how police dollars are spent. And that's, um, true, obviously. Uh, the Memphis Police Department decides how those dollars are spent. But as an elected official, I will not watch what is happening in our communities. I will not watch what has happened to people like Manuel Duran and Martavis Banks, and continue to increase a police budget without talking about the best way to spend those dollars, the best way to train and retain those officers so that they do their job.
Thank you, Tony, you're up.
Yes, um, you all are saying some interesting things, and I'm especially interested in what your, your data about health and everything. But, you know, everything you all brought up, you know, the crime, health conditions, it all points to a city that, um, that's still in crisis in a lot of areas. The majority of people in that, uh, region. But I need to get some idea, and I'd like to take, maybe starting with you, Dr. Williams, about, you know, what's your strategy for attacking that? You know, we know it's there, but what's your, what's your strategy for tackling the health? Like, for example, and I guess maybe the straight, the straighter question we'd ask you guys is, a lot of the stuff I'm seeing happening in Memphis, being from Florida myself, a lot of it is, is stuff that, um, that could be tackled if, um, if, 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 if you had the state legislature, the assembly working with you anymore. So I guess I'm gonna ask, because when you talk about health, one of the things, and my boss has heard me say this, and I look at what's happening in the, in the, in the, in the, in the legislature, where, you know, they tax food, um, I'm looking at this thing about vaping right now. And, you know, Mem- I mean, Mem- Memphis is one of, like, the third highest cities as far as smokers. A lot of people smoke here, you know? But then, the state has one of the lowest, um, taxes on tobacco. So that's not the, this, this, so just what would you do to combat, you know, a strategy rather, for combating some of the health issues? And then each one of y'all talk about, you know, crime. How would you, you know, would you, how would you do it so that the crime, we don't have, you know, we don't have a, a side effect from, you know, whatever you do affecting people adversely, like, like the crime bill did? So I start with Dr. Williams.
Okay, um, I, I just have to be honest with you. Um, I hadn't had any problems prior to finding out about the, the water issue. Um, I was actually doing a forum, um, for health in April, because that's National Minority Health Month. I went to the health department, and so I wanted to find out what was going on because of the infant mortality rate. So, um, basically, I put in my request for data, like four sheets of different data as far as the mortality rate, maternal mortality rate, um, uh, lead as far as being in the soil and the, and just general stuff, so I could write a grant to try to, you know, do something in the community. And as a result of that, when I went back to go get the data, which took them like a month or so, um, the doctor that I had gotten most of my information for as far as the screening programs and everybody I talked to, he's, he, he basically said, um, I gave you that. And then once he said that, I was like, okay. And then he said, wait right here. So I went to the bathroom, and when I came back, there were two security guards there. They escorted me out of the health department. And, um, what I did, I was so upset, because I've been going to the health department for over thirty years, going to any department, getting whatever I needed for health fairs and whatnot. And so I was so upset, I walked right over to Mayor Harris's office. And, um, before I could even speak to Mayor Harris's, um, secretary, um, the health department, um, Ms. Householder called me on the phone and said, "Oh, uh, we didn't realize you were up there, and that we didn't have a name on the epidemiology." "Oh, we didn't realize you were up there and that we didn't have a name on the epidemiology door and whatnot." And, you know, I told her I didn't understand, and I wanted a formal written apology. She said she wasn't gonna give me one, and that they would get something.
But what, Ms. Good Mary, they escorted you out because you asked for something and you were waiting?
Right, I had asked for data, you know? I mean, I was just asking for data on lead and all that. And so, what happened, I actually, I was in the middle of the process where they were actually getting the information about the hepatitis A outbreak that they had. And that was right before the health officer left and retired. And so, and I had mentioned that to Householder, you know, I mean, you know, hepatitis A comes from filth and feces and whatnot. And they were kind of upset because the people that I had talked to to give my information and whatnot, they were actually, you know, but I'm bound by HIPAA, you know, as far as being a physician. So, I wasn't gonna say anything about it. But I just thought it was odd because we had that hepatitis outbreak, we had measles outbreak, and normally, a lot of people get their thing, and then, we had that infant mortality rate. So, I think with all of that being combined and me actually asking for hard data and that I talked to people that were over the program, I think they felt like they were threatened by the information getting out to the public. And so, after that, I wrote a letter. And Representative Barbara Cooper actually wrote a letter to the health commissioner and told her that I should be able to get anything that I wanted from the health department. And so, I never did get anything else from the health department, so I went to the state. And the state just gave me information maybe about a week ago.
I'm gonna pause you right there to make sure you haven't even won a chance.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
That just might know what your strategy is.
Oh, okay, well, let me just tell her about this.
I'm gonna cut you off.
Oh, okay.
The question.
And I'm sorry, it's my fault. Because I stopped you, yeah.
I'm gonna cut you off too. Quick step. Same question for all the other panelists, and we can come back and another question could come up. But you need to repeat the question.
You mentioned help for her name.
Yeah, yeah, because that seems to be, because that seems to be one of the things. Well, what's your strategy? Earlier, you were talking about more sky cops. What would be your strategy for making sure that the sky cops operated more efficiently and not, you know, in an intimidating way? And it feels to be the same, not the sky cops.
Why don't you repeat the question?
Because you seem to think that that's one thing that's really needed. But how would it work? What would your strategy be to place them in places where you need them? And where do you think they'll make the most difference?
That's an excellent question, Tony. And I'm gonna say that as a person that's trying to get the endorsement of commercial appeal, I'm just hard.